I will be refraining from being around too many people. I've got strep throat and I don't know what else, but I did tell, I told Annette I'd hug her after the meeting, so, but I hope I don't spread this to anyone, but, yeah. That's it. Mike said nothing bothered him anyway, so he's too honored to catch anything. Row call please.
Mayor Conley Ball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Here.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Okay, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, January the 13th, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections or anything? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item four, there was a little complication in the employee of the month from the animal shelter. They just couldn't get everything worked out to get the recipient here, so next month we'll be doing two. Item five, correspondence and reports from interim city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to report, and something that I'll take pride in, and really it's a tribute to the department heads, but we have our insurance, our workers' comp insurance with Tennessee Municipal League, P O L. And annually Judy Housley, who is our consultant, loss control consultant is her official title, comes in and does an annual inspection and looks at her records, goes around, looks at our playgrounds, looks at her facilities. Before she comes, she goes to study on our accident rates and all that. And for the first time ever, this time when she came through, she gave us a complete clean bill of health. She had no findings and no recommendations. And so, I just want to say, you know, thank you to all the department heads and everybody that contributed to that. It's a team effort and that's never happened before. And so, it's something we're real proud of and I just thought we'd make sure that y'all were aware of that. That's a tribute to the department heads and everybody doing what they need to do and I want y'all to be aware of that. We have received a farmer's market grant. It's a 100 percent, $1,000 grant and it's for advertising to help the farmers market get out, get the word out where they are and when they'll be there and all that. Also, the audit is back for last year. Frank McDaniel's, the auditor, would like to come and do his report to y'all. It's been done both ways. Sometimes we've had a workshop, back when he was having a lot of findings and he needed a lot of time to talk, we were doing it in a workshop. Last year, I think we did it in a regular meeting, we might have done it in a workshop. Anyway, he said he needs about 20 minutes and so, I need y'all to think about what you want to do on that. Do you want to do that at the next regular meeting or do you want to have a workshop for him to come in and talk about the audit? So you can be thinking about that, just so we, we need to make a decision by the end of the meeting. It's something to be chewing on during the meeting. The latest late of breakfast is March 6th at Carson Springs from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. I think the mayor will be speaking at that. If any of y'all would like to attend that, just contact Regina so she can get you registered together. And also along the same line, the Education Foundation banquet is March 12th, the same place, 6:30 p.m. And the city always has a delegation that goes for that. And again, if y'all would like to go, contact Regina and she'll set that up for you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to the Newport City Administration in recognition of fourth consecutive year accident free in 2014. James, you want, you want somebody to receive this? You want to take my hand?
Oh, just a thank you. I'll hug you next week. Don't give me that way.
I'll talk to you.
Your reports complete?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Several items under item six on appointment of boards, commissions and committees. Item A is the beer board that Dennis Thornton is currently serving and wants to continue to serve on that board. That's up to city council if you want to reappoint him to that position.
I'm making a motion here in court.
Okay. We have a motion to reappoint. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or anyone else you'd like to see serve? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Appointment to the planning commission replacing Johnny Bug. I know the, at the planning commission, we had discussed, there are several times that they have a difficult time getting a quorum. We had looked at possibly making it a 10-member board and then we found out that six would have to attend, so we wouldn't be any better off. Bobby Knight has agreed to serve in place of Johnny Bug. And according to the ordinances, it's a nine-member board. Two of these shall be the mayor and another member of the governor body, which is selected by the governor bodies. The other seven members are appointed by me, so I'd ask council if we have a motion and a second to approve Bobby's serving on the planning commission.
So moved.
I second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anybody else want it?
Turn them up.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Thank you, Bobby. Item C, I have, due to my work schedule, I was unable to attend for the next couple, three months, any of the planning commission meetings, so I have temporarily appointed Randall Freeman, who will fill in my position until I'm able to assume those duties again. Okay, item D, Parks and Recreation Board, due to the passing of Randy Kegel. The, him, the Parks and Rec Board would like to put Chuck Strange in Randy Kegel's position. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chuck.
So, do we have a motion to approve that selection?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item E is the replacement of the Newport Utilities Board member positions. I just received this evening a resignation letter from Mike Profit, who's resigning from his position on the N U B board. And do you all have in mind tonight selections to fill some of the slots?
And Mayor, if I might address that, or at least make a statement on that, Alderman Profit's resignation is effective immediately, which means there is a vacancy for his position. As the audience and the public is aware, that this council appointed three Aldermen to take the place of the former Aldermen Bug, Costner and Morgan at the January meeting. So with this resignation, one of those positions would be vacant and open to appointment. Likewise, Jason Ramsey resigned sometime prior to today's meeting, so his position is vacant. So there is in effect two vacancies to fill those two positions on the Newport Utilities The position of Jason Ramsey will fill his unexpired term, which will be five and a half years or whatever it is, whenever he was appointed. It's a six-year term. Assuming an Alderman is not appointed to fill Alderman Profit's term, it will be for a likewise six-year term. So those two positions are vacant. If the board wants to nominate people for those positions, I suggest we do it on a position by position basis and fill them individually. Because with qualified applicants, who I think we've already taken applications, the qualification is, the applicant has to be a registered voter in the city of Newport. So, having said that.
Okay, I would suggest that the first position would be the position of Jason Ramsey. Do we have, does council have any nominations for that position?
I've got a nomination for Diane Stokely.
How second is that nomination?
Is there any other nominations?
I don't want to nominate Roland Dykes either.
Well, I, second. We're doing them individually.
I'd like to vote on him.
This is for Jason Ramsey?
This is for, one vacancy for Jason Ramsey. So far, we have Diane Stokely.
Okay.
He has the ability to nominate somebody else.
Absolutely. If you want a nomination.
Yeah, well.
That's fine.
We'll vote on him.
Yeah, we're doing them individually.
We're going to vote on individually.
Okay, you vote on Ms. Diane Stokely first of all?
Well, assuming.
We get more nominations.
Assuming there's no other nomination, if there's other nominations, we'll vote on them.
I want my nomination, man.
Do you want to nominate someone else for Jason Ramsey's position? I guess it's what the mayor.
Yes, and then after we fill that position, then we'll come back and take nominations for Mike Profit's position.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make Reverend Dykes.
For Jason Ramsey's position.
I nominate Mr. Claude Gatlin.
Okay, we've got three nominated right now for Jason Ramsey's position. Any other nominations? Last call for other nominations. Do I have a motion and a second and approval that nominations cease?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, first of all, the first one nominated was Diane Stokely. Let's do row call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Before I vote, I'm entitled to one vote per person or one vote in, for, I'm going to vote for one of the three.
You're entitled to vote yea or nay on Ms. Stokely. It requires three votes to elect a person. The first person to receive three votes will be elected to that position.
Okay. So I'm sorry, ask the question to me again, please. Voting on Ms. Stokely?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman, sorry, Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
So that's unanimous.
Okay.
There's no reason to vote on the other two.
No.
She's elected unanimous.
Elected unanimous, which they can be renominated for the next position.
We're going to have two more just a little bit later on, too. We're going to get two tonight and two just a little bit later, so it's not, it's not over. We're trying very hard to set this up.
So there is a position of?
A position of Mike Profit now that we need to take nominations.
I'll make Reverend Dykes.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Claude Gatlin.
Okay. Any other nominations? Last call for other nominations. Do we have a motion that nominations cease?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, row call.
We need to vote on that motion.
Yes, okay. All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? Okay, row call, Roland Dykes, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
No.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
So Roland Dykes will fill the position of Mike Profit.
Hey, we've got a lot of good people. This time, we've got a good pool. We're trying very hard to, just right, we've got a good pool this time to work on these. It's hard to fit the horn sometimes in different, some of it. A lot of good people and we're coming back with some more later on.
All right, moving on to item seven, a report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance.
I'm standing in for Mr. Roland Dykes.
Okay.
I apologize, I wasn't able to make the workshop last Monday. I had a prior commitment. But we would sincerely like to invite the city council to attend our Tanner Preservation Alliance meeting this Thursday at 5:30 at the Smoky Mountain Home Health and Hospice Office. We're going to be discussing our plans for the future and some grants that we're working on and we'll have our, the display boards up. If you all can attend, that would be great. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no, nothing listed under old business. Moving to number nine, new business, charter changes. A, the first one is replace section 10. City Administrator Paragraph 1, within 90 days after reporting for work, the city administrator must become a resident of the city of Newport. Replaced with city administrator must reside within Cock County within 90 days of his or her appointment. That's open for council to discuss or a motion to approve that change.
I would like to discuss it.
Okay.
I'm going to be proactive, not reactive in my statement here. There's a lot of pros and cons to Mr. James Fincham, or, excuse me, this charge, this is not about James Fincham, but since he's in the spot now, I'm going to say to you all and to his face, I can find cons and I can find pros for you being in this job. First of all, they asked you to come and get this job. How somebody would leave comfortability of a 30-plus years as a sheriff's detective, excuse me, police detective in a police mud is beyond me, but what I understand is this, I think there's a lot more people out there could be a whole lot better city administrator based on resumes, experience and the whole nine yards, but from what I feel right now, he's the best bargain we've got going on. I say that respectfully because the research that I've done proactively shows that the average salary for a city manager is about $98,700 in the 13-count cities that I did research on today while at school and neglecting some kids. Now with that said, James has to come to work every day and try to keep this financial Titanic from sinking the rest of the way down. He's trying to, every day, him and Ms. Tina are trying to stick a square peg in a round hole. Two semi-emergencies going on tonight that we've got to talk about, community center and the transfer station. Until we start raising revenue, we need to have in our thought process of managing the status quo. I'm going to change my stance on this because I'm not looking for tonight, I'm not looking for tomorrow, I'm not looking for next week. I'm looking for three, five, seven, 10 years down the road when Mr. Fincham, if he is named full-time city administrator and his charter is changed. If there's somebody that comes in here to Newport and wants to be the city administrator and they decide they want to live at the golf course and we say that he can't or she can't because they live outside the city limits, that makes no sense at all to me. I have brought on the expertise of Mr. Pat Hardy from past and he told us at our training up in Irwin that he never did understand why that was in there to begin with, that someone had to live in the city of Newport or live, move in within 90 days. But that's what the current, the mayor at that time suggested, or not suggested, but wanted, so Pat agreed to want his demands and put that in there. I don't see the, I don't see the sense in it. I don't see, I don't see the sense in it at all if we're going to get something. I was also thinking, if somebody moves in here, Mr. Real Estate Man, tell me how many upscale houses, for lack of better terms, there are in the city limits of Newport. I don't know what the definition of upscale is. You're the real estate man.
Very few.
One of the most beautiful houses for sale out next to the door to Tandy Francis and Jett Bo Francis is $300,000 and it's outside the city limits. Where's this person going to move to?
We're the only city around here that requires that. We did some checking on the other towns, other cities. Now some big cities can do that because of their pool is a lot different, their housing's a lot different, but they said for a small town, it should never be and we're the only ones around here that does that. So, and that's not, maybe that James Fincham, it's not, I don't, I say in the future, what's it going to be? So, I think the judge man with the job he's done and not where he lives is what we ought to be, sort of looking at, so that's just my opinion of that.
And I totally agree with that, but I'm looking more towards the future. I totally agree with what you said. I totally agree.
Any other comments from council?
Are you allowed to ask questions? Are you giving your special listen? I have a question.
Go to the mic, please.
Aren't the, oh, go to the mic. The gentleman on the board, aren't you required to live in the city or no?
Yes.
So you are required to live on the city?
Yes.
And the gentleman that is not is in what capacity? Overseeing the gentleman on the board or no, yes?
There's a difference between licky and appointed people, too.
I understand that.
Okay, that's what I.
I'm just asking, the requirement is that these gentlemen live in the city of Newport?
Our positions are not full-time, ma'am.
I don't understand, what does that have to do with being a city administrator?
You were asking about our positions. We're not full-time employees here.
I'm just asking how you're required to be in, live in the city of Newport.
Yes.
And this gentleman answered yes. So my question is, why isn't the city administrator, full-time, part-time, doesn't really matter to me, isn't he required to live in the city of Newport? Is it because he needs a more expensive house than each gentleman here? And city of Newport doesn't have that or what is the reason that city of Newport doesn't have those upper-end housing?
Well, that's another point. We're just trying to, you know, I'll allow for citizen comments later, but the board's trying to discuss whether they want to pass these charter changes.
Okay, and so, that's fine.
I've personally known James for over 30 years. He's been very dependable. Served with the police department. I think he would make a good full-time city manager. I think to remove the interim title, I think that's way past overdue and I think it's time to move on.
I've talked to every supervisor from every part of the city and none of them had a problem with him and if you can get to satisfy them, you've done pretty good.
Any other comments?
I agree with it. Everybody I've talked to has been well satisfied with how they've been treated and how he's affected and done things they asked him to do.
I'll drive on my point one more time. This is not about James, this is not about, I'm looking for the future. That's what I'm hoping on right now, the future.
James, for us, come and be your friend.
Well, I, just the energy. I appreciate that from Mr. Fancher because it's just like I said last week when this was discussed, you know, my detractors keep trying to personalize this and make this decision about me and it should not be about me. That is a separate decision. You know, if you change the charter and I'm offered that job or you all, you all may decide to go in a different direction, just because you changed the charter don't mean you offer me the job and if you offer me the job, doesn't mean I take. You know, what I had told the prior council was, when they asked me to stay, would I be willing to stay? And I said, I was willing to discuss it. You know, I've never asked anybody on this board or the prior board to change the charter. Not the first person have I ever asked to change the charter. Not the first person have I ever asked, can I have the job? Not the first one. And so, but my detractors, for whatever reason, want to personalize it and make it about me. Oh, you all are doing this because of me and it shouldn't be done because of me. It shouldn't be done because it should have never been put in in the beginning. That's my position on it and I thought it when they did it. That's still my position on it, whether it's me or it's somebody else. And as Mr. Fancher said, you better be thinking about down the road because even if I do stay, if you all want me to stay and I do stay, you know, about September of 2019 is going to get me. That's about as far as I've ever planned on staying. And so, if the good Lord will allow me to live, that's how long I plan on working for the city, whether I'm here or I'm back at the police department. And so, I, you know, I just want to throw my two cents where, and I tried, I've tried not to make a whole big issue out of it, but it just always seems to come back to me. And it should not be about me. It should not, but, I mean, because I'm in the position, what is being discussed, it's all, you know, like I say, the naysayers want to make it all about me.
Okay, I'm going to call for the motion to change the charter as read.
I'll make the motion to change the charter.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Okay, item B is removing section 18, the Newport Utilities Board Paragraph 3. The treasurer of the city of Newport shall act as treasurer of the Newport Utilities Board in capacity and shall not have a vote. That's what we discussed at the workshop. What's your pleasure on that? Just to remove it.
That required also another change on page, I'm finding here quickly. Recorder's also mentioned in the charter again, it would have to be struck, it can have to be struck in that area also. I think, you know, we really need to have a, page C 12 in the charter, section 11, if you don't, if you're paging. There's several charters here that's got different pages down the line.
What is that again, Mr. Ribble?
Well, it's on C 12 and on the other one, I don't know where it's at. We've got charters that's got different numbers on the pages, but it's section 11, city recorder. Section 11, if you'll permission, I'll read that. It says, I've got a copy of the charter here, it says, "The city administrator shall appoint a city recorder who may also serve as treasurer or finance director." That's the way we've always had.
Kevin, if we're taking out the position of city recorder, we shouldn't have a, we shouldn't have a second label like that.
shouldn't have a second label, and it should be, you know, treasurer, finance director.
We could sure change that to be.
When they, for whatever reason, again, when they redid the charter back in '07, or whenever that was, of course, prior to that, you had the city recorder, who was an elected position, and the city recorder also served essentially by job description as the city manager. And, of course, Jack Shepard was the last elected city recorder. When they redrew the charter to switch over to the city administrator form of government, for whatever reason, they left that title in there. They left that, the city recorder terminology in there, as they said, like treasurer, which we call the finance director. For the first few years, they had, as the, what I went back to with Tina, we just used both job titles. City recorder slash finance director. Now, for a time, when Mr. Collins was here, he chose to separate those out, and for a time, he had both. He had separate positions. And so, when I, when I came in, and we, when we had the old finance director resign and had to reappoint the position, I just consolidated it back into one position, because it's, it's the same position. It's two names for one position, basically.
Are you okay with that?
Well, you know, it's, I still want to confuse them, have a city recorder, treasurer, finance director, or finance directors, you know, as I understood, her title was, is it treasurer or finance director?
Finance director type city recorder.
It's the same thing, but it's just same word for both of them, so they can call one time, however you want.
Is that, of course, right now, we're looking at removing the treasurer.
Yeah.
From the utilities.
That was what was discussed Monday night.
Yeah. Which is, to me, is different than.
It is, in that the charter provided that, of course, it provides for a city recorder appointed by the city administrator, but it also had that provision in there that directed that the city treasurer should act on the utilities board as an ex officio capacity, which means they just attend the meeting and can't say anything, can't vote, which is certainly not a position that is needed, or it just needs to be removed.
If I'm not mistaken, that wasn't the old charter. That was a carryover to the old charter. That wasn't something that was inserted in as part of the change. It's just an old rule that was in there that has never, mine, my career has never been followed.
Terry, what do you?
I would suggest we eliminate that, as you all talked about in the workshop.
Okay. Okay, eliminate the treasurer.
Yes, sir.
From the utilities.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's what's on the table to vote on. Do we have a motion to remove section 18 as written?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Row call, please.
Jeff Fincham?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item C is to add elected officials take office 10 days after the election. That's open for discussion or a motion to have that added.
And Mayor, if I might elaborate on that just a bit, I've explained to a couple of members of the board that the election commission certifies the elected officials, according to election administrator George Slagle, three weeks after the election. It has to be certified to the state by the third Monday, which obviously, the election is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, which will put the certification basically three weeks after that day. So you're looking at a minimum of three weeks after the election. I did a little other research, Parry'sville, in fact, installs their new officers on the first Monday of December. That would be something similar to that, I would suggest, so that we would be within the period where you've been certified.
I forgot about the certification part of the bill, sweetie.
This number brought up 30 days, and I'd seen it on something of 30.
Well, when the city charter made me aware of that, he suggested to me in there that you might want to consider like December 1st or.
Or the first Monday, because December 1st could come on a Saturday or Sunday. Would you all be okay with making it the first Monday of December?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's open for discussion or a motion to prove it so written.
So I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fincham?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is to add powers and duties of the vice mayor. You have a proposed charter change in front of you there. One of them is the position of vice mayor created. Number two is Alderman receiving the most votes in general election to assume position of vice mayor. Item three is vice mayor to chair city council meetings and workshops in the absence of the mayor. And item four is vice mayor to temporarily assume duties of the mayor during short-term absences due to incapacitation.
And Mayor, I think these are very needed to the charter. All the duties of vice mayor have kind of been historical, have never been written down, and certainly haven't ever been included in the charter, and this would state them very clearly for us and all future chamber, council members.
Okay, that's open for discussion or a motion to approve it so as written.
I'll make a motion to approve as so written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fincham?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is to add section nine, duties of the mayor. The mayor shall not vote except to break a tie. That's already and has been, for as long as I can remember, in the ordinances of the city, that the mayor may vote, doesn't say he or she has to, but may vote in case of a tie. I thought it would be better to clear it up if you want that in the charter, in case somewhere down the line, a vote was taken, the mayor broke the tie, and repercussions, lawsuit-wise, come up, it said, well, that's not in your charter. That's just a matter of clarification, if you want the so moved to do that.
And Mayor, I might add, absolutely, the issue of the mayor voting needs to be cleared up. That issue, I have researched that issue. The charter doesn't say yea or nay. In fact, at some point, it says, "The board of mayor and aldermen shall vote on this issue or that issue." I have had extended discussions with them tasked about the issue, and they, in fact, have gone back and forth, but their opinion is right now, as their charter reads, that our mayor does not have the right to vote on any issue, including a tie, as the charter reads right now. So, if the council wants to clear that up, I think it would be a well-intended charter change.
And there's not been a tie in my tenure to have to even vote on, so, but it just needs to be cleared up, so, as we're talking the future, in case something did come up. What's your pleasure? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fincham?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, replace section six qualifications of mayor and alderman. No person shall be eligible for the office of mayor and alderman unless he is a citizen of the city of Newport, as here under incorporated, and it's written down here to replace with unless he owns property and is registered to vote in the city of Newport. I don't know what any council member's ideas are on that. I don't think that needs to be changed. I think you need to be a resident of the city of Newport. You have more of a vested interest. If you open that up for property owners, it could be somebody from Hamlin County, it could be somebody from the state of Kentucky that owns property here, and they would be allowed to run and represent the city of Newport. That's my two cents. Now, the floor is open for you. If there's no discussion or no motion, then nothing happens. It stays as written. Last call for discussion or motion. I hear none. Okay, item B, consideration of amending the engineering contract between the city of Newport and Robert G. Campbell and Associates for the Park to Flow grant.
Mayor, Mr. Dogg, you have to add that.
Okay.
I tried to present you the information at the workshop pertaining to what is happening with the Park to Flow. The engineering process, I gave you the contract on it, whereas we had to do some changes. The first one was a plan that was put in place, then when the monies, when it was pre-bid out, it came in over budget, so the state wanted us to change some things to meet the ADA requirements, and also to get it back under budget. And also, with our finance director, when that numbers came in, says, we got to revisit this also. The second drawing was questioned by TDEC, which is the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, whereas they had a different avenue that they wanted us to take on the Park to Flow, because we had put a restroom facility in there that didn't meet ADA requirements, also the ramp itself and the viewing platform, and so she had some recommendations that we had to go back for a third drawing. So, meeting those requirements is the third drawing that's in your packet that I gave you at the workshop, which means that we are ready to send it to Nashville for it to be approved by the state of Tennessee, so that we can move forward. So the amendment of $2,500 to their engineering contract is where we're at today, then that's what I'm asking for. As far as the finances part of it, Mr. Fincham and Ms. Tina can touch on those.
The dollars already are in the budget itself right now, in that line item and department, so we just need a board vote for the mayor to resign that contract, if you agree to.
So it's in the budget, we got the money?
Yes.
If some of this stuff is not right, Mr. Dogg, it, back on the next time, we're going to vote on it, but there's some things, whether you like it or don't like it, you have to do it. I mean, we've got to come up with the money for it on some things, you know, if we've not got the money, you can't do it, but there's some things, it's, you wasted $100,000 on $10 or something.
The best thing that's happened here, in the vision of Tina, when we put together these numbers, that she built in some contingencies, and I really feel that those were dollars that have come into play right now, which is going to help us offset the engineering cost. And the thing about it is, I go to these state people and give my opinion based upon they're costing me money, when all of a sudden, you know, once said a department of TDEC approves it, then you turn right around and another department questions some of it. And so, and along with that is the ARAP, which is the construction permit that goes along where the Corps of Engineers and TVA oversee, and you have to apply for permits to do this. So, our ARAP is expiring, what, March, I believe? And again, here we are, February, close to the time that we can get this thing out to bid, so that we can start breaking ground. But a lot of this is required by the state of Tennessee for us to take this thing back for drawing, redrawing, and it costs us money every time it happens. So we feel like this has met the need.
Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this change.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Since that's involving money, let's have a row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fincham?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dogg, before you sit down, I can offer you a personal challenge.
Please.
This is definitely unbannounced. We've got to raise revenue in this city in the worst way. I want to challenge you and your staff. You know the power of recreational events, AAU events. I know our facilities are limited. I want you to put your thinking cap on, Brandon and the other people in your staff, and let's get some people rolling through this town that are going to spend money wherever.
We accept your challenge, and as far as tourism goes, when we had our state tournament this past year, we reported at council, within a four-day tournament, we produced over $20,000 in a four-day tournament, and we accept that challenge.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
My daddy passed away about seven years ago. His 90th birthday was yesterday. He said, leave, follow, get out of the way. I want you to start leading more.
Thank you. Got you.
Tim, you just need to stay up there for the next one. It's the consideration of community center dehumidifier requirements.
Where do we go here? Let's scramble a little bit. 16 years ago, the city put in a dehumidification and did some renovations, actually 20 years ago, to the, to the community center, which means the community center had no dehumidification system when I came on board. They had signed with McGill and Associates, and there was this dehumidifier renovation of the center, metal roof, the dehumidification over the swimming pool, which meant also that there was a three-inch tongue and groove roof, oh, the ceiling part that had rotted off, due to there not a dehumidification system in that facility. They challenged us, we put the, we put a system in. Bill Schultz was the city attorney at that time. We put in a system, or McGill and Associates put in a system, that never worked. Constant compressors blowing, and the city challenged the council to look at maybe going to Canada and suing the company for this not to work, for this dehumidification system never to work. So then they turned around and asked me to find a dehumidification system that will work, and 15 years. and 15 years ago, we put in this system. Eight years ago, we had to replace a evaporator coil within this system. 15 years ago, it was over $90,000. Today, it can be $130,000 to $200,000 because of the way things are faced. What we have is an evaporator coil in the system with the packet. How the air flows in, it's used to heat the water that returns back to the swimming pool, it pulls the moisture out of the air, it keeps from the roof rotting off, or it raining in the community center the way that it does. The coil is cheaper this time than it was the first time. The first time we replaced the coil, it was a little at $20,000. We're looking at $18,900 now. And in return with that, we have some built-in maintenance that has to be done. There's three valves that are going to be replaced, bearings for the cage in the big airflow, and when you look at this, and this is what blew me, and Mark can talk more about this part of it, Freon is out of sight. It's like 200 pound, which could cost us up to $4,000 just on Freon. And of course, we don't have the money in our budget to do it, and that's why we've come to council and asked for money to replace the coil and do the work that needs to be done.
So, Tim, if the coil's not replaced, you shut down the pool?
It becomes, well...
What happens if you don't replace the coil?
If we don't replace the coil, what happens is, everything becomes wet. The ceiling becomes the rainforest, as you're using the facility. Now, as this water and condensation builds up, you're looking at some health things that come along with that.
Mold?
I didn't say that. But that's very possible, that can happen, that will happen.
What you do, Mr. Drucker, may is just talk to the city administrator, the finance director, slowly see what you're going to come up with. You know you need it, I mean, you know, people, I don't think, every little detail about it, they just don't know if you need it, how bad you need it, if you've got the money to do it.
I wanted to give you the history of it, because I think you needed to know that. I think Bobby was working with the city when we put that together, and I think Mike was working with the city too. So, these are important factors to make that community center longevity there, to use the swimming pool, and to prolong the life of that building, because it's a gorgeous building. And that's why we're asking for it.
Any other discussion or a motion to approve?
We got the money. I guess that's the key.
It would have to be a draw from the fund balance, and this would have to be put into a budget amendment, the next one that we do. He has sufficient dollars in his budget department now to go ahead and authorize, but those dollars are going to have to be replenished at the next budget amendment, and that would be a drawdown on the fund balance.
More discussion or a motion to?
I've got to have it, Coach.
I make a motion to replace it.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I say.
Any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item D is consideration of extended medical leave for a city employee.
Mayor, we have employees who has been on FMLA, has utilized all their personal leave, vacation leave, and their FMLA leave will expire at the end of this month. There is a letter in your packet from that person requesting a special leave, and there's also a copy of the policy in there that shows that you all have the authority to give that employee a 90-day leave if you so choose.
What's your pleasure?
I think we ought to give it, because I know the whole situation, and everybody's trying real hard to buy it, everybody's trying real hard to, it's something beyond the control of the patient. Do it. Give me.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
No.
No. I second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item M is consideration of request of donation Cock County High School baseball team. That was sent to me from the baseball team requesting the city. Tina, did you ever determine the last donation we made?
Yes.
Along the same line as this one?
Yes. Last year in January of 14, $500 was given to this organization. This was taken from each alderman's allotment to give out to different places in the city for their, but we did also have a $300 donation made at the request by Freddie Gregg in December of 14.
And that was all to the baseball team?
It was to the baseball team, but it did not specify that it was for this sponsorship. It was just given to the baseball team.
Okay. So, we've already gave them $800?
In 2014.
In 2014.
Last school year.
Is there a, what do we have in the overall city fund balance for donations, not individually?
Let me see. One more.
Didn't we just a few meetings ago deny funding for the senior citizens? We didn't have any money for that.
We did an increase. We had one that asked, I don't know if it's the same thing. We had one that asked.
Senior citizens, right.
Yeah, and we've been doing increases for a week. We've got a donation for a week.
Those donations I think you're referencing to are in a different phase of the budget, or section of the budget. It's in its contributions to charitable organizations.
So, they come out of each one of the, one of the things we could do is each council give X number of dollars out of our, that's what they did last year.
And the highest amount of sponsor is 400 this year.
$50 each would, I mean, that'd be $300.
Our allotment is how much, Tina, per person?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
I can't make a motion. I'll only make 50 out of mine.
I'd like to make a motion for each one of the city council members to use $50 if they're allotted, 250 given per year, for personal use for community marketing of relations or discretion, to use to give to the Cock County High School baseball team.
And me included?
Including the mayor of Newport, Tennessee.
That's the motion. Do we have a second?
Some more.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item F, consideration of CGI communication showcase video program. Has anybody got any questions about that? This is something that the city's done with this same company before. They come in and do some interviewing, do a little bit of videoing, and they kind of announce us around the area and kind of the country.
This is an internet-based, I go to www.watt.com.
Yes.
And it's updated yearly?
Yeah, it's updated about every four years, I believe. And it's no cost to the city. They do come in and try to get sponsorships to further reach, you know, more places.
And what kind of success have they had getting sponsorships? Do you know how they've been going?
It's not been sponsorships before. They've just, I think they started out just doing it free, and now they're going to get sponsorships, but they're going to reach out, you know, to businesses in the community, individuals, and so forth, and even if they get no sponsors, as the information said, there's still no charge to the city, they're still going to do it.
Am I speaking out of turn if I ask, let's say this company went out, and I'm going to throw a $20,000, they found $20,000 worth of sponsorships, and our need to raise funds for this city, should we not be able to ask for a percentage of that?
That'd be a good question that I could ask them.
Does, you know?
Yeah. Before I...
Before you totally commit?
Yes.
We can get 10%, 20%? I mean, that's 10% or 20% we get. Of course, if we give this 10% or 20% of zero, they have no sponsorships, my math says that's zero, so.
And I guess what they're, one thing that they're saying is, you know, if they get a company here, or a business, like a tourism thing, rafting, or whatever it might be, they're going to jump on board with this in order to get exposure for themselves, too. So, but I'll ask that. Yeah, I mean, it's free to us, and it's publicity that we don't have to pay, but I'll sure negotiate that question.
Is that a fair question to ask?
Very much. Do we have a motion to approve me contacting the company and asking that question? And, I mean, if we don't, if they don't give us any, we still need to be obligated to do this, because free exposure.
I make a motion.
Okay, got a motion, got a second? Any discussion?
Seconds.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Before we have citizens' comments, I did contact Nathan Vatter with the state. They may have already done it, or going to be in the process of doing a red light study again at the Pizza Hut, so, citizens' comments.
Can I have a first and foremost?
Sure.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Doing a lot of thinking, driving back and forth to Knoxville every day, and I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Reagan, if something happened to you, you know who would be your successor, who would step in and take your job? Something happened to you today, tonight?
Today, it would be Mark, but the actual appointment comes from the board of aldermen.
With that said, Chief Schultz, if something happened to you tonight, who's in charge of our police force tomorrow?
I've got the opinion before something happens, that if I assign somebody, I have the authority under our general order to appoint someone, but if something happened, maybe I'm not able to, the city administrator would probably have to decide to, he's going to temporarily assign him, because that concerns. It always does, normally. The big part about it is what it does to your manpower. If I assign somebody, they know that's my, that's what I, the department, the basketball department, our plan, but, you know, if that person's not there to be upon him, they don't really know who's in charge, because that sometimes causes me to freak.
So, I think every department head ought to let the city administrator know, or should know, like, in case something happened. Tim, you know what I'm saying?
But with that said, I agree with you. With that said, is there somebody you can call on now? Does that person not need to have a financial incentive to, from what I understand, you're training them, and they're all leaving to go somewhere else?
Yeah, we just lost one officer for a $6.30 increase to take on car and family insurance. Got another one who was talking about leaving for finances. I personally think that if it's anything that happens while I'm in charge, if I had the plan to be out for surgery or something like that, I would assign Steve Hudson, who's the administrative captain, to follow and lead the police department in my absence. And then that way, when the guys, if Steve steps in, they know he's who I appointed in my absence to do that. And it's, he's consuming a lot of responsibility that he has for the past several months, and he's more particular than, well, couple of years, but he doesn't get any compensation for it. But when I'm going to be out of town, I call Steve, tell him he's in charge until I get back. It's a whole lot of weight to carry, I mean, the fact that we stepped into that position a couple of nights.
Mr. Drucker, you got somebody that would be, would Mr. Fincham know? Would Mr. Ben Hicks have somebody? Would Mr. Fincham know who would be next in line?
Tim doesn't. Of course, he doesn't really have anybody, like, an assistant, or, now Ben does, Ben has an assistant.
As long as somebody would know.
But Tim does not. Tim is not having a player.
And if it better helps answer, it's, we're set up similar to the police department. We have our standard operating guidelines, plus our job descriptions, and it's set, well, I was in Murfreesboro for three days last week at a chief's conference. Mark was in charge, and so, but it's already, if something happens tonight, they know who's in charge right then, and that's every day.
Well, we're living the time of the dollar bill.
Oh, yes.
And it breaks my heart to lose a policeman. From what I understand, you go to Wop, Piner, Dandridge, you make more money than you can afford your own pants, Mr. Drucker. You go to Piner, Dandridge, but that ruffles my feathers a little bit.
Mr. Hansel knows what it means, that one of the biggest benefits is the take on car. I mean, you've got a vehicle, you maintain your stuff in, you drive it back forth to work, you don't have to get somebody else's mess and clean it up, or try to find your stuff, and very hard to call it, and when you get a take on car, and a better salary, nobody's saving you.
Well, that's something I like to put on the back stove. I'm not trying to dodge or anything like that, until money gets...
Right. Absolutely.
And also, I hear every day of, I'm sorry to prolong this, but it's important to me, because, you know, you put your life, and other people put their life on the line for Equipment like tasers, equipment like body cameras, is that even part of the discussion of Newport policing right now?
We don't have it to issue. Most agencies are going to taser. Body cameras are going to about be mandated by the federal government before long, and it's one of those things we're looking at, some, maybe trying to do a little wide and transfer or two to be able to start to equip our agents or officers with, but right now, it's a financial thing, and tasers are not cheap, because video cameras are not very high, but you have to order 45 of them.
Why don't you and Mr. Fincham, y'all got time together, sit down and talk about, maybe try and get some grants, because federal governments, more required, they usually give you some grants, and straight grants, y'all work that out.
We've been talking about that already. We've been talking about it for several months. We've looked at a couple of options, one of which is the drug fund. We've done a lot of good work in building up the drug fund, and we've got a little bit of money that's, where, the only good thing that's come out of people leaving is that you have to go through a process, and I think the Civil Service Board's giving a test tonight, in fact, to create a hiring list. But while positions are empty, you do accumulate a little bit of money, because you're not paying the person that was in that position. And Maurice and I have talked, and Tina, and we have all talked, and we think that we can pull enough money together out of boats to be able to do some tasers. But we've been working on it for some time, and talking about that for some time.
At least one per shift.
Well, we were looking at...
If I go on that route, it's just like having one dog for 300.
Yeah.
The man's never going to be there, you're going to have to wait for somebody else to get a taser.
Bring in a taser.
And Murfreesboro tasers, I mean, less lethal approach to arrest, and we can not even consider that one, we're going straight out.
That's the best thing.
Quit the shift with the bank, and swap them out, or get as many as we can, but that's...
Y'all will come back.
But to answer Mr. Finch's question, effectively, when I'm gone, Steve Hudson assumes that position, if I go out of town on the weekend, he can't go out of town, and he doesn't give any compensation for that, I will.
One other thing I'd like to bring up, Ms. Tina, I understand you're doing a bad job here, I appreciate it. Question to Mr. Fincham, is there a difference between a financial director and a state-certified financial director?
Well, what you have is, it's required by the position that you have to either be a certified financial municipal officer by the state, or you have to be an accountant. And Tina has finished her training, and she is certified, so...
So, I'm in here.
Yeah, I think, did we announce that?
You said she was about to finish it last time?
I thought we announced...
It had just been very recently?
Yeah, it was end of December.
Well, let's announce that to, everybody needs to be announced to Nelson, to you.
Tina is certified.
We were waiting on her actual certification. We were waiting on her actual certificate to come. I mean, the paperwork is done, but we have not received her actual certificate in spring. But yeah, she's completed that training. She has met all the requirements, and she is now a certified state municipal finance officer.
Anything else from council?
You were going to rule a workshop for...
What did we get?
We need to know, do you want to have a... Yeah, thank you for bringing it up. Do you all want to have a workshop for the audit report, or do you just want to have it as part of the general meeting for March?
Ben approved, you know what's going on. I don't...
Well, I think since we're all new, I'd like, you know, talk to the auditor, and I think...
Well, he'll do that anyway.
Yes, he'll come and set up.
Yeah, I think better accomplish that workshop.
Yeah.
But we really need to take a look at y'all, you know, and see where we're at on all that stuff.
Is this the same guy?
Because I don't know who... I don't know what all the audit... I don't know what the request was.
Well, it's the entire city budget.
Okay. Yes. But I mean, did he... Money flow, cash flow, and all that was offered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then, I think we should have a workshop on that.
For a one-year period, Jim?
Yes, sir. For the last fiscal year.
Last fiscal...
Thirteen points.
2014?
Yes, sir. He has come both ways. He has come and done a presentation at the workshop, and he has also came and did a presentation at the regular meeting. It's strictly up to y'all's pleasure how much time you want him to take to do it.
Is this the same guy? The first city council meeting I went to, there was a guy stood up there for two hours and read off his paper. I don't want two hours. I can read that myself.
Well, then that's... You know, I don't... I like the frame. It's very thorough, and he'll take as much time as you'll get.
Well, I want the potatoes of it. I want the facts.
You know, if he could give us the papers right now and look at it and then do the... Can he do that?
We have those. We just brought those, and we're going to get them first to you before you leave.
Okay. Y'all would give us those.
There's a reason I see.
Then I'd do a workshop.
Yeah, it needs to be a workshop. You don't need to do that at a meeting.
Right.
So...
Okay. Tina said that he has advised that he can't appear March 3rd.
I can ask if he could fit you.
Okay, just come up with some dates that he's available, and then we'll set something. Anybody else?
Thank you for bringing it up. I had forgotten.
Citizens' comments?
Mayor, council...
Yes.
I think y'all may maybe mentioned my request for the city to purchase an ad in our... We're trying to update our senior service directory. I didn't catch what your determination was for the ad.
Is that on the agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda.
That's the package you gave.
Yes, I gave at the workshop.
How much are the ads?
The smallest ad is $250. We print for 4,000, 5,000 of these books, and we give them out free to anybody that wants them. So, that's...
Is that one in your hand there from...
Yes.
I don't see those six.
Sure.
I'll go 50.
Like that book there cost me about $7,800 two years ago. We update them every two years.
I'll go 50. We don't have to vote on that anyway. That's up to the individual. I'll go 50.
Okay.
Here's 50. I hear 50 more.
50, 50. Appreciate it. It's a good tool to have. We try to highlight all the services, all the agencies in Newport and surrounding areas for services. So, it's a very good tool. And we get a lot of calls from out of state for people that have relatives here. They want that book, so we send it out of state, too. So...
Okay, let's see. I'm 50, you're 50. Here's 50, 50, 50. Good. How's that?
You can have it.
Any other citizens' comments? Do we have a motion adjourned? I didn't see your hand, Claude.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Still have time?
Yeah, go ahead. That's okay. I...
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I want to be on record on the charter changes. I've had an opportunity over the last several years to talk to a lot of taxpaying citizens. As we went through the elections, we talked to voters, but I'm talking about taxpaying citizens, okay, of the city. I'll go out on a limb right now and say that the majority of taxpaying citizens do not want to see charter changes this time. Okay, reason being, as you mentioned a while ago, that you had several copies, Mr. Gribble?
Yes.
Okay. In the workshop that we had this past Monday, it was mentioned about house cleaning of the charter.
Right.
It needed some house changing. Taxpayers just feel that the city charter is not a document that's taken in cafeteria style form, or it's used for quick fixes, okay? And these changes that are down here now are not going to change the operation of the city if these do not go through this year. And what the recommendation is, is to let's get the charter cleaned up. Let's have a single document that's valid for our city before we go by, okay? One very critical change was not in this package to go to Nashville. Excuse me. Those sore throats going around everywhere.
Don't blame it on me.
The charter change that created the problems that we had out here in Newport Utilities, okay, that's not included this time to correct that. So that alone has stirred up a lot of talk within the community, within the taxpayers, to hold off on charter changes this year until we get this document back, not necessarily in its original form, but as we go through it and make sure that all house cleaning is done. Okay, we're still vulnerable with Newport Utilities Board of Directors to still have problems created from the charter change that opened that door already, okay? So that's a recommendation, and I'll go out on a limb right now and say that is speaking for the majority of taxpaying citizens, that you do consider this before you send these to Nashville, okay? One other thing is, I didn't hear anything tonight other than the possibility of this charter changing opening the door so we can fill the city administrator position, okay? It redefines the perimeters of who can hold the city administrator job, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If that goes through, then it goes to Nashville, and it comes back, and it still has to be voted on again, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Two thirds for George, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then application will be taken for the city administrative job?
That's correct.
Okay, so everybody would have to fill out an application, send a resume in. But the overall thing that I want to say about the charter change is, taxpayers don't want a charter change this year until the charter is in correct form. Send that charter to Nashville, get it approved, and have it back, and have an authentic working document for this city to go by. Okay, we have vacancies in three departments right now. That didn't come up in tonight's meeting as far as EDC, okay? But as we all know, all tax citizens know, that we've got some critical issues right now. We've got some tax money that has been drained from the budget in three departments of our local government. Okay, EDC, city administrator position, and Newport Board of Directors, okay? Practices and procedures were not followed in these three departments, which has created settlements now, which is negative spending by our local government. Now, when you go back to the EDC, that includes county and Parry School and City of Newport, okay? So I want to hear more discussion from you and from county and from Parry School on EDC on how we're going to correct management who fills these positions and guidelines established to where they work within the boundaries of their job descriptions and job duties, and we eliminate settlements, okay? Settlements is another position for wasted tax dollars, okay? So those are the two issues I feel like that I can stand here tonight and say I represent the majority of taxpaying citizens in the city of Newport. On EDC, I feel like I can say that I represent the majority of taxpaying citizens in the county and the city, okay? So I just want to be on record on those two points right there, okay? I thank you for your time. My reply to that is, you know, this old stupid analogy, we need to take one bite of an elephant at a time. We got a big elephant here in Newport, and I wish we could push a button and correct everything that's everybody says needs to be corrected. I totally agree with what you said. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Claude.
Uh, yes. You need to come to the mic.
I know I'm awful young to come up here, but, I mean, I like politics and city politics, and I like to know things about our community. And one thing I've really had on my mind for a very long time, and I've talked to my grandparents about it, is tourism. I have had some really great ideas for tourism, and I thought one of them... Lots of people are obsessed with things like roller coasters and things like going Dollywood or stuff like that. Why not something learning? People can go outside and learn something. They can go out and go outside and just look. God created an entire universe in seven days. Why can't we build a museum for people to come and learn about our community, things of the past, things that just... We can't explain. What about dinosaurs, for example? There's dinosaur bones being found everywhere all over the world. Who's to say that we can't talk about something that was found millions of years ago or in this county? What if somebody had found a dinosaur bone, or what if someone saw something that we need to know in our community? Our city council meetings, what if someone wanted to know in the past what they said when Abe Lincoln was here? What if someone wanted to know about our community from hundreds of years ago? I mean, what about it? If we build a museum, that would be a great example. Rafting, as you mentioned earlier, that would be a great thing. But all I see is potential in this county. We've had so many great things happen here that there would be so much tourism if people would just see the beauty in our county. That's...
I appreciate you.
I do, too.
I appreciate that comment. I'm on the little museum board that burns. We have tried for years. Everybody you talk to wants a museum, but every time it comes down, it comes back the money again, and we're trying hard to try to figure out something. I'm with you at 100 percent.
State your... What was your name? Did you state your name?
Do I need to put my full name? Because my grandpa says not to give out my...
It don't matter. Just have you on it. We just need you for the record, since...
Uh, Preston Brooks.
Good job, Brooks.
Good job, Preston.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any more citizen comments? Motion adjourned. Anybody against it? Thank you.